Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Griffin Spalding Board of Education Work Session in May. I told two ladies that walked in all dressed in spring that they must have thought this was their last workshop that they were attending. But anyway, we're excited for those that are retiring. I want to call the meeting to order, and if you would, place your electronic devices on silent. And if you would, we are going to have our prayer and our pledge. Let us pray. Father Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for Griffin Spalding County School System, Father Lord, and every one that it represents. But we ask, Father Lord, that you give us continued wisdom and direction in all that we say and do, in the events, in the hirings, in the workings with people, Lord, to make it the very best that we can be. We thank you for that. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. And our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. Board members, at this time, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of our agenda. I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. It'll be five zero. All right. Item four is our consent agenda. Board members know that there was one item that was added, E., as a late item. Spalding High School, one, a track and field, I think, or was it? I can't remember what she told me. Anyway, something was happening that had to be added in case that they go out of town.
Point of order. Can you please state what the document actually is for the record, not whatever it is, please?
Spalding High School FCC LA Field Trip.
Thank you so much.
So I had, did I have a motion? I hadn't heard one yet.
Not yet.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
I have a motion by Ms. McDonald.
Second.
And I have a second. I'm going to give it to Ms. Cook. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. It will be five zero. All right. Our action item, which is the Kennedy Road Middle School renovations. Mr. Ballard?
Good afternoon, Chairman Dawes, board members, Superintendent Simmons. Appreciate you allowing me to come forward today again to present a new project that we're hoping to get moving with. It's one we've been working on for quite a while and actually took bids on last, early last month, and we had hoped to get it in in April, but then when we changed to just the one board meeting, weren't able to do that. But do have some good news with that, and so wanted to look at moving forward. So what we did have, we had four contractors that came to the pre-bid meeting. Following the pre-bid meeting, we had one contractor that withdrew. We had three other contractors that were planning to submit a bid. We had two that actually showed up on bid date as opposed to three, but the two that we had were, we believe, good bids and are good contractors to deal with. So was, BGA Construction Company was one of the ones who we're all very familiar with, have done a lot of work for us in the past. And then the other bidder was actually ICB Construction Group out of Macon. They are also a very well-known business that's been, they've been in operation since 1990, have worked on a number of different other school system facilities, also park facilities, hospital facilities, a lot of higher education facilities. So they've done a number of jobs around the community and areas down around Macon and south, as well as some to our north, and they've done a couple of projects in Henry County. So with that, we had talked with them, and they actually came in as the low bidder this time. Fairly considerable difference in the bids. We did have the base bids for the project. They were at 6.3 million, and MGA's price was 6,770,000. In addition to that, we had nine alternates as part of the bid, and ICB's price for the alternates was 827,177, and MGA's price was 1,446,000. So being that they were substantially lower than MGA, we wanted to do a little more research, make sure everything was good with that, because MGA's been generally much lower. But it ended up that they said they felt good with their bid, and then in talking with other people that have worked with them, as well as they've done a number of jobs with Manley Spangler Smith, they've had really good luck, so they thought that we were good to move forward with them. So that being the case, as we've talked about the last couple of projects, we do have the inflation considerations, and prices are up a little from when we had done our original estimates and stuff. So we are a little higher. We were able to capitalize on some state entitlement for this fund, for this project. So we capitalized on that. But even though we're a little over budget on it, we still, with the funds that we have available there, and it's been unfortunate that the first couple of projects that we had were under budget, we still have money in the SPOSS six funds to cover that, but are also hopeful that as we move forward, if we are able to capitalize on another three months of revenue from the SPOSS, that we'll be able to earn additional money that could be put in there and still leave some other contingency funds for a few of the other projects we're still working on. So with that, we would like to recommend tonight, and with that, we talked about alternates. Those are like we talked about the last few bids that we've done. We put those in there where it would give us an option to kind of move money around and kind of work with it if we need to, but go ahead and move forward with the project. So we will kind of fine tune that if we need be as we enter into the contract and move forward from tonight. But as of this afternoon, we would like to recommend that Griffin Spalding County Board of Education approve a not-to-exceed amount of 7,127,177 for the lowest overall base bid and needed alternates estimated by ICB Construction Group for the renovations to the Kennedy Road Middle School project.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Does anybody have any quick questions of him? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Dawes. Hey, Bruce.
Hey.
On the second page, the top, it says, we're SPOSS six, blah, blah, blah. And it also says, so if we hold off on the roof alternate, what does that mean?
Well, that goes into what we're saying there with the alternates, that some of those are things like a sign for the project or a roof. So there's different things like that that we were looking at, and that's what I was saying. We put those in as alternates, because if the money is not available, then we can go ahead and have some items we can take out, but quickly go ahead with the project as opposed to having to go back in and value engineer it that might take another month or so. So we feel like with where we are tonight, that, you know, we're hoping we're here as well about where we stand with the 50 million cap that we were looking at on SPOSS six. But with that, even if that doesn't come up, we actually have the funds there, thankfully, and so we can move forward on it. Again, when you look at the fact that the roof itself is a situation, the price that MGA had, that was the biggest difference in the overall price, and we're getting a really good deal for this roof. We also need to consider a roof for Cowan Road Middle School, which is very similar to that. So we could hopefully be able to work out a contractual deal where we could take bids and maybe they could give us another good price to take care of that one as well. So we feel good about it at the moment.
So the roofs for both schools will be taken care of. Is that correct?
Well, tonight, we're only looking at the one for Kennedy Road.
Okay.
We would come back for the one for Cowan Road.
Okay. Because I'm a firm believer, if you have a good roof, then you're protecting everything in the house, so to speak.
Yes, ma'am.
That, to me, would be a priority as a board member. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dawes.
Anyone else have a question? All right. Hearing none. What is the pleasure of this board?
Mr. Chair, I ask that we make a motion to approve Kennedy Road Middle School renovations.
All right. I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second by Mr. Holmes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. It'll be five zero.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Shanisa Ashford, our Archway professional, going to give us our quarterly update. Thank you for being here, Ms. Ashford.
Thank you so much, Chairman Dawes, members of the board.
Ms. Shanisa, you need that microphone lowered a little bit more.
I don't know how to take that, so I'm gonna say no. Thank you.
As far as I know, there...
I'm excited to bring you an update on your Archway partnership, since I came before you in January. First, I'd like to update you on the completed projects that have already occurred. We had two student projects that were completed this semester regarding the Spalding County recycling facility design. So Spalding County is looking to design its recycling facility at Carver, and the students presented a wonderful design that we will bring to the board. Also, we had a student project for Griffin and Spalding County Recycling Marketing that the students presented as well. So that's two different teams, but those projects were completed this semester. Also, would like to let you know that there were projects that were approved by consensus of the Archway Partnership Executive Committee. Two of them deal with feasibility on U.S. Business 1941. One is at the corner of Ellis Road, and the other is at State Route 16 regarding land use in terms of retail housing, things like that. So those projects were moved forward by your executive committee to student projects, and we will see which student projects get picked up for the fall and the spring. Also moved forward was a research funding project for home repair projects for homeowners who need assistance in repairing their homes so they can avoid code enforcement or eviction. So that was also moved forward to present to students. And then the last, the second to last one was an update on the 2021 Social Services list that will be modified, and also that's included with Leadership Griffin. They had a team that did a project on that, so that will be merged together. The last one that I'm really excited to present to you that was moved forward to consensus was a marketing design project called Where Can You Go From Here? And that's a comprehensive project to highlight all of the educational opportunities in Griffin and Spalding County and how they can move forward into other educational opportunities or career opportunities. That's including certificate programs, continuing education programs, higher education as well. The audience for this is the Griffin Spalding community at large and high school students. The current work groups are up and running. We have Achieving Prosperity Work Group, which is focusing on a one-stop shop to create an intake opportunity for community members who need assistance but may not have the resources to travel to multiple locations. Then you have the Housing Issue Work Group, which is focusing on a neighbor home repair program where community volunteers go in and do minor repairs for their neighbors. And this morning, your Education Issue Work Group met to discuss a parent and student life skills program where it will supplement your current curricula, and it will use local experts in different areas as needed to develop, to talk about different life skills. And your issue work group this morning had a robust discussion about what life skills they thought were needed by the students and their parents, and now that's going to go out to the students and parents to ask them what would they like to see in a program such as that. Also, we're going to audit the current programs that are provided by other organizations in the city and county to see who is providing programming regarding these life skills so that it can be a comprehensive program. Just to give you a couple of more updates, the next meeting for the Education Issue Work Group will be June 4th at 10:00 a.m. in the Flint Building on UGA's Griffin's campus. We will start our Public Safety Issue Work Group on June 27th at 2:00 p.m. That meeting will be on the Griffin campus. We are excited that we are also adding a bucket to your strategic plan focusing on mental health, so we are scheduling that work group to be held in June. And the last piece is tentatively scheduled for August 15th and 16th is the Intergovernmental Retreat between the City, County, and School Board to be held in La Grange, Georgia. And that is the update I have for you this quarter. Were there any questions?
You mentioned about mental health. Would that be in such a big, big item, not just in our state, but a lot of states? What exactly is that? Is it going to be a workshop, or what exactly that is going to entail?
So the first piece to that is the raising of the issue work group itself to determine what the priorities would be in your community regarding mental health. Of course, that includes all entities, because we know mental health affects everyone. So we want to make sure that we have a lot of the community's support in that work group to move that forward. That work group will decide what priorities it wants to focus on for the year, or what projects it wants to bring for UGA students to work on.
So in that work group, are there representation from the hospital?
Yes. So actually, Ms. Eisen is one of the champions for that work group, so she will be placing people on that group for discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members' questions? So if you didn't hear it, Archway's retreat, which is our retreat, is August 15 and 16, which is leave early, leave on Thursday morning, be done at noon, and head back. La Grange, I think, is the location that that's going to be, so if you can put that down. Also, we are in a position, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to all of you that have attended one of those issue work groups already. I know that Ms. McDonald and I were not able to make the one this morning, but we have made another one. Is anyone not receiving an email about the issue work group that you signed up for?
I'm not.
You're not receiving an email? Okay. So if you can make note of that for me. Mr. Brown, you get in your email?
I am not.
Which, you know of those groups, which work group you wanted?
Education.
Okay.
And Ms. Cook, are you receiving your email about that? Okay. So it is time for us to sign the MOU again for Archway, and everything is tending in that direction, that everybody is excited about getting the momentum started back with these issue work groups. Also know that we have the ability for a project to get students to work on a project for us as a school system. So if there is something that we want, and we could use UGA students, whatever it might would be, to do some research for us and that type of thing, we have that ability. We just need to come up with that is and then submit, submit those projects. So the plan for that MOU is on our next board meeting, and we'll make sure that you get a copy of that prior to that so that you can see that. Any other questions about Archway?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms., very much, Ms. Shanisa, for being here and presenting to us. Appreciate that. Next in our agenda is our construction bonds, Raymond James and Associates, and I saw that you made it in from the traffic jam that you got involved in. So thank you.
That's wonderful. We have a little presentation prepared, and we're getting it to you.
Perfect. Perfect.
Dr. Simmons, do you want to skip me for right now and go to the next one? We'll get our, I'll get my act together and have the presentation loaded.
Consensus of the board, do you want to make a motion to do that, or do you want to allow him that opportunity?
How much time do we need?
He's waiting on our IT. He's just giving them the information, so they're going to get it loaded. Not exactly sure, but we could hear a, two minutes? We'll wait two minutes.
Thank you. We can just talk about it. I printed one out, too, so I'm ready to go. I'm sorry about that. First of all, thank you for having me back. My name's Bill Camp. I work with Raymond James. We've been assisting you and your staff with sales tax projections and debt service bond information to figure out how to forward fund some of these projects. And in front of you is a paper copy of this handout, and if you would, please look at page three. There we go. Anyway, on page three, you'll see a history of sales tax collections in the county, and you'll see growth factors for the last few years. Our sales tax is currently collecting 14.2 million dollars a year. That's the last 12 checks that you all have received. On average, the last five years, growth has been almost 9% a year. And over a 10-year average, we're up over 5% growth year over year over year. Just keep that in mind, that growth in your sales tax is expected, and that everything that we're going to talk about, debt service, thank you. That's a touchstone. So you can just slide up. Thank you very much. Everything that we're showing you on the numbers runs on the debt service assumes no growth in sales tax. All right? This is our referendum. This is your referendum.
Mr. Camp, if we can ask one quick question while you're there, so we don't have to come back to it.
Yeah, since we're on that page. Hi, Mr. Camp. Down at the bottom, it says the 442,000 September Audit Return. Can you explain what that is, please?
Throughout the state, this was a phenomenon that occurred. Some large, some large sales tax payer.
Some large sales tax what?
Payer, a payer of sales tax. Their money was inadvertently held by the state of Georgia and not made it to you and many, many counties throughout the state. We don't know who it was. I've asked state, hasn't explained, but a big chunk of money was sent back to most municipalities in the state of Georgia, and it was accumulated over years. I deducted that one-time event, hopefully one-time event, from what happened in 2020, because I didn't want you to, that's a one-time event. So we deducted that out, so we've got an 8% growth average without that 442,000, just to be safe.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That's a very good question, though. So our average collections are about 1.2 million dollars a month. This is your referendum resolution. This is the ballot question that was put to the voters. This gives you the category of capital projects that we're able to accomplish with SPOSS seven. On the right-hand side of the page, you see the five principal amounts that were approved by the voters, and that's what we're living within. We can issue up to that amount, zero, or portions of those amounts. All right. So assuming no growth in SPOSS, again, we've averaged almost 9% in the last five years. Assuming no growth in the sales tax, you're going to collect about 71 million dollars. We've got a collection cap of 102.6. Takes almost 14% year after year after year to hit that number. So we expect not to collect the full amount, and that the sales tax will run for a full five years. But under very conservative estimates, you'll collect over 80 million dollars, maybe even 90 million dollars in the coming five years.
Could you repeat? What was that? Cap?
Cap is 102,600,000. That's, that was based on about 15% growth when we put that in the ballot question. Okay. Again, you want to set your cap, you all, we set the cap high enough to make sure that the sales tax runs for the full five years, not really a budget number for your capital planning. I know you have the needs, but I don't want to artificially, I don't want you to expect to have 102 million from this SPOSS. Okay. So when the voters approved the sales tax, they also approved your ability to borrow against that five years' worth of SPOSS cash flow, bonds. Why did we include that in the, in the question? And it's really very simple, to try to turbocharge and get some projects, more projects done sooner than if we just collect money and build projects year upon year upon year. And that, the reason that you want to try to do as much as you possibly can, as soon as you can, is to cut out inflation, because construction inflation has been pretty severe for the last several years. Not a reason to borrow money now, but a good situation to be in is you borrow on a tax-exempt basis, and you're able to reinvest those dollars, put it in an account, and earn at a little bit higher rate under current market conditions. So there's some reasons that we put it on the ballot, and there's some reasons today to, to proceed or consider moving ahead with, with some projects. This is just a bar chart showing you what I was talking about earlier, about construction inflation over the last few years has been pretty bad. Things have actually come down a little bit in '24. This is comparing March numbers for the last, for the last many, you know, decade and a half. But unfortunately, we had double-digit inflation '22 and '23. This page is just... This page is just more of the same. This is kind of showing you a graph of cost inflation on the left and the erosion of your dollar. Why do we want to do something in year one of the SPOSS instead of year five? Well, in the last decade, our value of money has gone down, our construction dollar has gone down about sixty percent. I'm sorry, it's gone down about forty percent. It's about sixty percent of what it was. And the vast majority of that drop, the loss of the value of our construction dollar has occurred since '21. Hopefully, it would go back the other way, but you know, in my experience, we see things level off. We don't really oftentimes see things deflate and come back to a square footage price that's where we were five years ago. Okay. So, page 10.
Mr. Camp?
Yes, sir.
We have a board member has a question while you're there.
Yes, sir.
Hey, how are you?
Fine.
I have a quick question.
This one?
In looking at the projected debt service or series of 2024...
Yes.
And looking at Mr. Holmes referenced the cap and knowing that when these things are put out for bid, how are we able to control a couple of things? One is the long-term planning for it, the risk management of it and the value of engineering. How are we able to potentially have those funds that support those three things for construction inflation so that, you know, we're in a ballpark figure?
Couple...I'm speaking out of my lane, but...
Mr. Jones may be able to answer?
Yeah, well, you've done a pretty good analysis of needs. You've dealt with the state. You have a five-year facility plan. You've looked at, in advance of calling the referendum, the types of things that need to be covered. And that's how you came up with your facilities, your SPOSS capital program. And as far as any more in-depth analysis, I'll be happy to let one of your facility staff answer that.
Okay. I'll get with Bruce. Thank you so much.
All right. He's got a spreadsheet that's about six feet wide that he can show you, so...
All right. Mr. Holmes?
I, you know, if you could, go back to that history of new school building, construction, inflation, and I know how materials and everything just went through the roof.
Yes, sir.
And we're only a few months into the actual year 2024. And you may have said it and I didn't hear you, but do you have some kind of projection of where we are from that sixteen point oh three?
This data...
You keeping up with the trend?
Yes, sir. This is actually from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics and they post this data for every month.
Okay.
So this is showing you cost changes for new school construction, March of '24 versus '23, all the way back to March of 2028. And so at least for March of 2024, costs have come down some, about a percent and a half from where we were March of '23.
Okay. Okay.
I'd love to tell you, we expect to see that, but I just looked back over this graph and there's two times where costs went down.
On our sheet, the last one got cut off.
It was cut off, so I thought I may have been missing something.
We couldn't see the 2024 on our paper documents, so we see that now.
I see. Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay, I didn't have that. And I...with...for projections. And they...do they have any kind of projections out there as to where they think this is going to be by the end of 2024? Do they have any kind of projections other than showing that it's down a percent?
This is history. This is not...
So that's just based on history?
That's right. So I would tell you that most of the time, looking at this graph, things generally cost more every year and it's probably on average something about four or five percent a year in a normal year. Okay?
Okay.
Twenty-two and twenty-three were really bad situations out of the norm. So I hope we're not going to see 10% inflation going forward, but I do expect costs to be going up.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Very good question. Well, we've run, working with your staff, we've come up with a few different scenarios of what might debt service look like. And what we have here under number one is sort of what I would say is a maximum scenario. What could the district afford based on what the current sales tax collections are today? And you might say, well, that's cutting it really close, but I always want to show you kind of what I would tell you your max is. But this bond issue would yield to the district sixty-three million, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars deposited to the construction fund. And it would be roughly equal to fourteen-two a year, which is what we're presently collecting. That's our suggested max case.
Board members, make sure you notice that that last column is being...is not on your document. It was set in the PDF and so you could only copy it the way that it came.
Okay. Well, and you've got debt service and on the far right-hand side, pay-as-you-go dollars. What the law allows you to do is once you have bonds outstanding, sales tax first goes towards paying debt service every year. And once we have excess in a year, that SPOSS money is available for projects. We call that pay-as-you-go projects. In this case, not much, not much. In other words, the sixty-three point five-nine is what we would have available, what you would have available for projects. And if sales tax were to grow, well, we'll have more pay-as-you-go dollars.
Pay-as-you-go dollars?
Pay-as-you-go, it's SPOSS money that you collect up to a certain level and then accomplish a capital project. You collect money, pay for the projects as you go, pay-go is what we call it.
So right now in our SPOSS, we, all of ours, are pay-as-you-go. We don't have any bonds.
Correct.
And so that's the terminology that's used. So then if we have to, in a calendar year, we have to pay back so much of bonds?
Yes.
If we collect more than that, we could use those pay-as-you-go dollars. Is that correct? So we could continue to use those funds. So say it took us through September to pay off that year's debt, then October, November, December, we could still use those funds that had come in if we wanted it.
Why are these figures on it right different every year?
It's just taken your fourteen million, two oh seven, that's the last 12 checks, versus the annual PNI. We got it jelly tight in this scenario. This is...this means the sort of the maximum case scenario for your bond payments. And in the green boxes, you see a note about the sales tax up top, what is our assumption? And then down below, all these bond numbers are pretty conservative and here's why. We assume no change in SPOSS when you've had an average of about nine percent growth the last five years. And also earnings, I'm excluding earnings in your SPOSS. And if we collect six checks on average, we're going to collect 12 months of SPOSS, but on average, those checks are in an account for maybe an average of about six months. Fourteen million, two earning five percent, throwing off about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year or every six months. So in other words, you are going to have cushion based on probable growth in the SPOSS and probable interest income from the SPOSS dollars. Yes, ma'am. All right. Number two. This is a scenario where we deliver forty-nine point five million into the construction fund. That number was arrived at based on a master spreadsheet that assumes pretty aggressive spending. And so the forty-nine and a half is not pulled out of the air, but if the number is forty-nine and a half, a good way to think about borrowing it is to use our bonds that the voters authorized in the last four years of the SPOSS. And the reason, if you notice in pay-go column, pay-as-you-go money, we have a tremendous amount of cushion generated by dropping the principal in the first year. So that pay-as-you-go money, again, it's money available for capital needs. The plan would be to spend our bond money first and then we'd have about eleven million dollars for other additional things. And finally, number three, we wanted to show you an option that was roughly fifty-fifty. If we assume thirty-two million upfront for projects, this would give you about thirty-four million in pay-as-you-go dollars. We think about bond money. We think about priority projects, things that we can accomplish, we want to accomplish for sure and accomplish them pretty quick. And then this would, again, give the school district about thirty-four million dollars of pay-go, most of that coming to you in the first couple of years of the SPOSS. So it's...it affords you some options and lowers the bond size. Any...yes, ma'am.
Would this alleviate the hoops that Mr. Ballard has to jump through to get something to the table, to bring to us, to vote on, to approve and go forth and build?
I will let Bruce answer the question. As I see it, in any one of these scenarios, whichever amount of money, he's going to have thirty-two million dollars earmarked for particular projects and can hit the ground running as soon as the planning and engineering are...
Okay. For example, I know with the bid process, would the bid process be different because of the bonds or would it be the same? The same, okay. What else would be the same as it is in your world today, Bruce?
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. It works.
With that weighting, you know, we run the risk of inflation.
Yep. Well, we already have.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Mr. Camp.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm just letting you all see that rates go up and rates go down. These are recent changes in tax-exempt rates. We've experienced a pretty good run since about November of '23. Rates came down. They're starting back up. A lot of indications are these, that the Federal Reserve is going to lower rates several times during '24. Now, that expectation is diminished. We think they might start lowering rates in late '24. This page here, page 15, shows you tax-exempt rates, current tax-exempt rates, the red curve. And the dark curve shows you an average for the last about 30 years. So unfortunately, our bond yields in the five-year range are higher than average. That's where our bonds were voted. We've got five-year bonds associated with five-year sales tax. But the good news is you borrow on a tax-exempt basis. Let's call it three and a half percent. You're able to reinvest money on a taxable basis. So this is not a reason to borrow money. It's just a good situation to be in. We're able to borrow money and invest it and earn what's called positive arbitrage while Bruce is spending the money down. It'll sit in an account under current conditions and earn at a slightly higher rate than the money costs us. We intend to spend that money down quickly, but at least for as it is today, we're in a positive arbitrage environment, which is not normal. We've seen it a couple of times in the last two dozen years. And that is, those are the remarks I've prepared and I'm happy to try to answer any questions or go back over information if any of the board members would care to.
Board members, do you have any further questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we do have more.
And it really is for Bruce, you know, I know you got your number, you crunch your numbers, but how are they coinciding with your projections, especially the bill that we want to do? Did you hear me?
We're getting you a microphone. This is for the folks online.
So yes, sir. We've been working together over the past about half week, week or so. Well, we've been working together much longer than that, but for last, since last week, on fine-tuning some of the numbers. And we had done projections and you've been around long enough to know some of the projections, seen what we had done in the past for our construction projects and other needs for IT, transportation and so forth. So we'll basically take those five years and we'll go in there, look at our projects and then project, you know, what we're anticipating the cost to be on a monthly basis for those projects, for all of the projects. So that all was shared with Mr. Camp as we went through it and did that. So these scenarios kind of tie in with kind of what we laid out, basically put together initially on my end, three different scenarios also. But, you know, we're fortunate. You know, we're very fortunate here in Griffins Spalding that we have options. There's a lot of places that don't have options and, you know, they've got to go out for that bond. They're in a dire need to get projects and have projects going, so they have to have a means to do so. But we're fortunate that we do have the opportunity to consider. We put together this original plan from the local facility plan and the details we had there in a conservative manner where if necessary, we weren't able to go out for bonds or it didn't look good, we could do it on a pay-as-you-go over those five years. And then we have that opportunity to go in and I kind of reschedule things where we could then go in and pull those projects up for the first two and a half, three years and try to accelerate some of those to be able to hedge against some of the inflation aspects and those possibilities. You know, we're hopeful, as we showed there, that we may have a little downturn in the inflation. We do know that the construction market, a lot of the commercial residential market has slowed this year. And with that, then you have more people that are going to want to come over to the school industry again where it's consistent work. So we are hoping that'll make a difference. But again, that is going to take a few years to get to that point. So if we could have something upfront to go ahead and move forward and get things rolling a little quicker, that would be beneficial to hedge against some of that. And then the other option that I'd prepared was just basically accelerating as much as we could, which was kind of that top of the top line, you know, the maximum amount that he was showing there. Again, that's something that we could work with, but that starts to also take away some of our other opportunities for other funding. You know, the last several projects, we have been able to get state entitlement funds from the DOE. But if we move those projects up too much, then that brings them about where they start before we're eligible to earn those funds. So we couldn't get as much. So I think in a lot of ways, you know, midway around there is a good opportunity because that gives us a means to take care of the initial upfront needs, but then have some flexibility and some other... but then have some flexibility and some other means down further on to kind of have more pay-as-you-go and to be able to work through. But the other option is always, and Bill had talked about this before, hadn't really hit on it tonight, but, but you know, if we get into this two and a half years or so and the project's going along well, we're paying back the, the bonds, if we need additional bonds, we can go out and, you know, do another bond issue at that time. So, you know, that, that provides, that option is still there, that we could do so in the future. So I think we're in a great situation that, you know, we have as many options as we do, but then we have good counsel working with us to, to help us along through this.
Yes, Ms. McDonald.
I know Bruce and I sat down one afternoon so I could become more familiar with this. As a board member, Bruce, you may have answered my question then, but, okay, is SPOLOST four still open?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so let's say we have a project in SPOLOST four approved by the board, blah, 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 of one point five million. We do the bonds, we take that money from the bonds to do that project in SPOLOST. How, or i- is that even, are you allowed to do that?
No, ma'am.
Because we get this quicker than?
That, that money that's there, it's already there in SPOLOST four, what we had to work with is there. So this will only be applicable to SPOLOST seven. And that's the way the referendum was set up, that's the way it all was. So what, what Mr. Camp's talking about today only applies to SPOLOST seven. The others, the money is there, and it's just a matter of getting, working through those details. SPOLOST four should be gone away here in the next few months.
So we'll have greater flexibility with seven to do tons of things quickly. And four, five and six are as they are. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Board members know that Superintendent intends to bring a recommendation to our next meeting. It'll be one of these three. Do you wanna say anything to that? I think he may be leaning towards the second one, but we'll wait and see what he brings at that time. They're still working through those numbers, so. Thank you so very much for being here and sorry about the accident and traffic that happened.
Thank you.
Glad you were not in the accident.
Me too.
All right, next board members is policy BBD for first reading, Board Superintendent Relations.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
I want to present to you this afternoon, policy BBD relating to Board Superintendent Relations, first reading. I prepared a draft and previously shared with you back in February that the definition of a governor's leadership team was added to the policy. And this policy was then assembled for a period of thirty days where we will receive input from board members and stakeholders. Afterwards, the policy be, will be brought back to the board for second reading, approval and final adoption. And this process will be the case for the remaining policies that are presented tonight on first read.
Board members, any questions about policy BBD?
What, what's that policy again?
BBD.
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 BBD, okay.
Board Superintendent Relations.
All right. Next, we have, you did have something?
I did.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Dr. Warren, is there any reason why line forty-four is repeated on line eighty-eight through ninety? For example, high school graduations are official, official candidates, and then it goes again under Board Superintendent Relations to eighty, eight through ninety, it repeats it.
The first version of the policy is the draft policy with the red. And the second version is all black, and then entire policy is repeated. Yes, sir. That's our normal format that we use. Yes, sir.
Okay, we did it.
All right. Policy BH for first reading, Co- Board Code of Ethics.
Yes, the second first reading draft that I present to you this afternoon is policy BH, Board Code of Ethics. And in this policy, in the draft version, a section titled was added as well as a code of ethics pledge.
Any questions, board members? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Right here. So it's question, more discussion. When I am against the reciting the code of ethics pledge, just like any code of ethics or any oath that you do, you normally just sign it and it's a record. Why are we reciting a code of ethics pledge?
So at our, our last training, GSBA suggested that we start doing that code of ethics on an annual basis. So we will be doing that. And then the other recommendation is that it just be a part of what we already have with, with our policy.
All right, that was a suggestion, right? So what I'm saying is I am against reciting the pledge. I have no problem adhering to what the pledge says. But as far as reciting the pledge and doing all that, not in my interest. And if we just print the pledge out and you sign it, you can make an announcement, all board members have signed the code of ethics pledge, and we can keep it at that. So I would like that part stricken from the.
Show me whi- on which line, what, what?
Forty-one, one forty-one, one forty-two. At the first meeting each year, or for the first meeting, new board member, board member shall execute the pledge shown herein. The pledge shall become a part of the board's minutes for that meeting. Failure to abide by the code of ethics is a breach of public trust. I agree with all of those things. However, it's the part of executing and reciting that pledge, shall execute the pledge, is where I am torn at.
Okay, I did not read it as we would be reciting it, I just read it as we would be signing it.
Okay.
Is there anyone have any different opinion than that?
No, I don't know.
I think, it's not that we're gonna be reciting it as a group or anything like that. We're just gonna be signing that paper that has that on it.
So remove execute and say, board members shall sign the pledge shown herein. So strike the word execute and put sign.
I was getting worried 'cause I didn't wanna have to memorize anything.
Well, Reese the Resurrection King, so I can do that without a problem.
Any?
I'm still looking at, okay, so line one twenty-five, process and possible code of ethics sanctions. I think it really should be, 'cause if it's dealing within the board, it's more of a censorship and not a sanction. And maybe the board attorney can speak to that if he would like to.
This is just copying what the statute says, I think the statute does use the word sanction.
Okay.
Sanction is in a policy in the paragraph below.
All right, so I don't know, I'm just, that word sanction, hmm. Well, I got thirty days to think about it, so, all right, cool beans.
Yes, just email me any feedback that you have. I recorded some this evening, and we'll take a look at it for a second reading, so that we get it to meet your pleasure.
All right, thank you.
All right. Good one, that one. All right, we are now moving to policy EFDD, which is data and information security for first reading.
Good afternoon, board. The district is presenting policy EFDD, data and information security for first reading. This is a new policy for our district. This is following up after a couple of years ago, the school board dedicated some funding towards our cybersecurity initiative where we mitigated a lot of issues. And so this is kind of the follow-up from that towards the culmination of our work. We've been working this past four or five months with Nathan Miller, who's the chief technology officer for the Georgia Board of Education, going through mitigation steps, protecting student data, looking at the, the products, the applications that we're purchasing for students to use. Are those applications safeguarding data? And if they're not, we're working with those vendors to correct that. So all the wording in this policy directly addresses our relationships with vendors, keeping our student data safe, our relationship with our staff and students themselves, and about the safeguards that we have in place to protect all of that student data and to just mitigate any issues from outside entities that may be trying to breach into our network.
Okay. Board members, do we have any que- Mr. Holmes, do you recognize?
Mr. Harper, that, that, does this policy take into account what we saw happen to surrounding school, board, district, boys?
Yes, sir. And it's in the parts, I think, starting around line twenty-one, where it gets into, this includes establishing an information security program to secure the confidentiality, integrity and availability of the institution's information systems, because that's what got breached in our, our neighboring district. And that's where their biggest pitfall came from, was some of the lack of security there. So we purposely had that in there. And again, it was part of our work with the DOE to just, hey, let's get in front of all these issues now so that we can hopefully mitigate the likelihood that that occurs here.
Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so very much, Mr. Lani. We're going to policy GAMA, drug-free workplace, first reading.
Good evening. I present to you this evening, policy GAMA for first read. It is drug-free workplace. There are no recommended changes to this policy at this time. We will let the policy stay in assembly for thirty days to receive feedback and answer questions.
Board members, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none, thank you. We will move on to policy GARH, employee leave and absences.
Okay, I present to you policy GARH, employee leaves and absences for your consideration. This policy does come with a change. It will change the way in which sick leave is accrued for employees. Sick leave, this policy would have sick leave accrued at the rate of a day and a quarter per month as opposed to having the sick leave days advanced at the beginning of the school year. This information was shared for your consideration in February with a follow-up in March. So I present this to you and let this policy stay in assembly for thirty days to receive feedback and respond to any questions.
All right, board members, any questions about this particular one? I have one just quick question, 'cause I know, but number four there is in red, but then it's stricken. Was that originally in black and now, and so, and there wasn't a five, and now we're adding? So will that, if that is stricken, then we will make that number four?
Right, so number, in, in the final version of it, that number five will become number four. We'll remove the line, the red line that's stricken.
I, I assume that, I just wanted to clarify. All right, thank you so very much. We'll move then to policy IFBD, media centers for first reading.
Again, the district is presenting policy IFBD. The only current recommended change is we changed some of the language to meet our new titles of staff members, basically following our organizational chart. And so everything else remains consistent except for that piece so far.
All right, board members, any questions or comments? All right, we do not, so we will move on to policy IFBG, internet acceptable use for first reading.
The district's now presenting policy IFBG. The, this policy actually was just approved, I think, at a previous board meeting. But between that work and our work on our cybersecurity and some of the things that were going on, we added an extra bullet, bullet G, which is, addresses in a regulation that was added that specifically goes around the staff use of generative AI in the district.
Okay, board members, do you have any, Mr. Holmes, do you recognize?
He is just.
Yes, sir, it's, that whole line is a new addition.
Any other board members, questions? Yes, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Harper.
Yes, sir.
Provide, Board Member Holmes, a little more context as to why we added that particular bullet.
Yes, sir. You've probably heard of artificial intelligence and its use of generative AI. And a lot of companies right now are rolling out uses of AI in some of the products that we're already using, a lot of it being with immediate feedback to students as they're working on online platforms, they can give feedback. And the program using artificial intelligence will immediately give that feedback. So we've been working with staff on that, also with generative AI, working with staff members about using products such as Magic School AI. Has a lot of great platforms in there, providing IEPs, a lot of tools. Even OpenAI's ChatGPT, which has been very beneficial in some of our trainings with new staff members who aren't used to teaching. This is the first time in the classroom, they're unpacking the standards. We've got the curriculum that's pretty well laid out, but they sometimes may struggle with how do, what's the best way? And so it's super easy to take that standard that we have in the curriculum. They can pull it straight out of there and say, can you explain this to me on a six-rate level? And it breaks it down, help me unpack this. Can you help me plan a lesson using this standard, using the guides that are already in the curriculum? Pulling that information out, it says that I'm using this platform to do these things. And just say, can you differentiate this for high achieving students for my ESOL? Can you integrate technology? And it just gives a plethora of examples, and especially just providing emails to parents. Hey, can you read this email? You know, ask ChatGPT, even, can you read this email? What's the tone of this email? Can you make the tone of this email more friendly and caring stuff? And it'll rewrite it for you. And so it simplifies a lot of work, but it helps give people starting points to making the work that they're doing even better, 'cause they just need somebody they can talk to. This is what I'm trying to do, but I'm not sure how it's supposed to look. How should this look? And even with our writing, you know, we have the, the prompt for writing. We can say, upload, here's the rubric. Can you create a writing sample that's scores a level one? And it'll create that. Can you write a writing sample on this topic that's a level four? And so now you can go through that with students. Here's what a level one, here's what a level four. And it's, like I said, it simplifies a lot of the tasks and it helps teachers just be a little bit more comfortable with the tasks that they're doing in their classrooms.
One nice.
Yes, sir.
And, and how do we do it for, 'cause I'm pretty sure every employee, teacher, whatever, have access.
You lost me on the consent part.
This policy, is that signed or how, how is that executed?
I got you, yes, sir, I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying. We do have an acceptable use policy that staff members sign each year. And so that acceptable use policy is derived from this, this policy here, which is the internet acceptable use. So we have an acceptable use policy for staff and we have one for students. And having this laid out, this is what drives each of those. So to get real specific in this is that, you know, it says it there that you're adhering to legal privacy and data security. So when you're on our network, are you being ethical in the stuff that you're doing? Are you creating stuff and passing it off as your own? If you're taking it from somebody else, that gets into copyright infringement. And so a lot of this reiterates, when you're on our service, you're using our equipment, you know, are you being ethical in the stuff that you're doing? So they sign that each year, and this just ties back into, because even though we're not training, people start using this. And so it's, again, it's us trying to get ahead of people and say, if you are using these, you don't put student data in it. If you wanna create like a differentiated help you out, you can put, I need something with this, but do not add any student data into that, because all these OpenAI sources, all this, they have no policies for privacy, which goes back to that other one. There's no safeguards, there's no security. So that's part of us getting in there that, hey, you can use this, but these are the things you can't do. Because we don't wanna open up to any loss of data from our district.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to policy IFCB, field trips and excursions for first reading.
Good afternoon, board members. I'm, I am presenting to you.
I am presenting to you policy I F C B. This is for field trips and excursions for first reading. At this time, there are no recommendations for edits or change.
Any questions or comments, board members? All right, thank you very much. We will move then on to Finance Department Updates, Mr. Byron Jones. Our fiscal year twenty-five final budget presentation will be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board members, good to see you again. This is another in our series of updates, remind you as we go through our presentation, if I've highlighted something in yellow, I'll just point that at your eyes that has a change from the prior presentation. Again, communicating effectively, hopefully we're going to do a good job with that this evening. Again, empowering each student to graduate college and career ready is our goal here in the school system. Our roadmap to success, again, aligning our resources to student and staff needs, and again, all of this is to improve student achievement is our ultimate goal here in the school system. So this is a new slide, you've seen it the last few years, we tweaked it a little bit, and I wanted to just bring your attention to some of this. We talked to the superintendent about some of our goal areas. And so I wanted to just point out a few of the items in yellow, and then make a brief comment on some of maybe the white items. I had mentioned to you before, we've been really doing an in-depth analysis on department budgets and analyzing, trying to enhance our strategic initiatives, and when we do that, we know we may have to reappropriate some existing spending. So as I had mentioned to you before, for the most part, all of our budgets in the department basis, non-school related, have got some type of reduction. Most of them are around the five percent level, some of them are a little bit more, some of them are a little bit less, but for the most part, they're ninety-five percent. And that's ninety-five percent now on the current year of twenty-four, so ninety-five percent of this year's budget, not proposing an increase for next year, and then we come back and say, cut that ninety-five percent. So we had to talk with our department leaders a little bit about our expectations for that. So again, we're going to continue our letter B, continue our implementation on our new ERP system. I gave you all an update a few months ago about that. We did go live with our LSA Local School Account Accounts last month, and we got all of our printers set up, and we're working towards the schools being more efficient in that process. So again, just as an update, I'll continue to update you on that. For higher performing staff, we are going to talk several, later in the presentation, we're going to talk a little bit more about the retention supplement for teachers and other personnel. So you'll see that mentioned a couple of times in the presentation, one or a couple of them are being yellow. We are going to recommend implementing the governor's recommended salary increase, which is going to be a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for certified personnel. And then we've talked to you again in my last update about semi-monthly payroll cycles. We have now developed a draft payroll cycle pay schedule, and we will be publishing that soon to the public, to the employees. So that's well on its way, that'll be going live in July. Family and community engagement, just wanted to tell you again, providing and trying to enhance the Griffin Spalding brand. We do that through the community, right now, we're currently doing some billboards, you've seen those throughout the community. We've also utilized Let's Talk, and we're trying to ramp that up through some campaign messages that you may have seen lately, Mr. Pugh's office leads that effort. And then our marquee sign recognitions, which we've got, I don't know the exact number, I would say seventy-five percent plus of the schools actually actively using those message boards at the schools now. Appreciative of the board approving that last year, that was up close to nine hundred to a million dollars investment for the schools. And then on student achievement, we'll have another educational materials adoption in the budget that's going to be recommended to you on May the twenty-second, and then continuing our focus on the lower performing priority schools that we've been working with the University of UVA on the last year or so. Little bit of, a little bit of yellow on the last presentation's numbers. I did want to just point out to you, the last slide I had just said that we would reopen the debt service fund in FY twenty-five if we decided to bond, but I just want to make sure you and the public understand, the school district has really had no debt since, maybe I'm going to point to when I came to work here, I think it was June of twenty twenty, and we were making our final bond payment that fall. So, and that would have been, I believe, Bruce Splot five. So we've gone through now Splot six, about going to Splot seven, so you have no debt. So we would have to reopen the fund to incur debt, and Mr. Camp would depositing the money into the construction fund. That means they would deposit it into the debt service fund. So this number, one point three million, is a little bit less than I showed you in the prior presentation. That's because the recommendation that may come to you would be something less than the maximum amount to borrow. That's all that means.
If I can make just a quick comment, the, what is available online, or what I pulled up online, the numbers are, it didn't line up straight, so I don't know if that is what the general public is seeing, and this is different. So it's all still the same thing, I just, the hundred and fourteen thousand right now is underneath the general fund on my screen that I just pulled up.
Coming by assembly?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that we get that corrected for our general public to be able to see.
All right, some of this will be, again, just a reiteration from last time, as a repeating, board members, we're down about two hundred FTE, that's about a million dollars. So again, I just want you to understand the math, we're trying to challenge our non-instructional folks to look at their budgets, and that's where we came and arrived at a five percent reduction, because if we're going to invest back into schools and we're losing enrollment, we've got to look at our departments as well. So that ties in there. This slide is pretty much unchanged from last time, other than some of my wording on the yellow. And again, I just want to, want to point out that we are going to recommend a step increase for employees. The health insurance rates are going up for certified and classified. Again, twenty-one thousand one twenty for a certified employee that chooses the insurance, that's pretty high. So, but that's, that's the environment we're in now. TRS is going up almost a percent, which that equates to about five hundred thousand dollars a year. We are going to recommend the governor's recommendation of the twenty-five hundred certified salary increase. And then when that happens, incrementally, a local teaching supplement goes up as well. I'll show you that on a slide that I put a new item on here in just a second. Again, I've yellowed the retention supplement, again, we're going to speak to that a little more here towards the end of the presentation for teachers and other employees. And then again, as a reminder, will be no S R three money for next year other than the expiring part in September, because those federal grants go through September versus June. Okay, teacher allotments, as I told you last time, we picked up three positions. It wasn't necessarily because enrollment increased at the schools, but the FTE analysis, we've been doing an in-depth analysis of how we, how we code our student count, so we actually picked up a couple of positions, and mainly because of the way we serve the E I P population. So that's, that's the reason for that increase. So again, unchanged from last time, we are going to propose at this point a deficit budget, but it's balanced at this point, other than what we're proposing to use for the retention supplement. So just want to reiterate what I mean by that. Over now, in the final recommendation on May twenty-second, we're still looking at salaries, we're still looking at benefit load, because we have to look at the people that are in the position right now. We know there's comings and goings, there's hiring, there's leaving, so et cetera, and we're trying to institute our new software module between the old and the new. We're trying to figure out what people's benefit load and salaries are going to be. So right now, we're still believing we can balance the budget and use the three point five million from our forty-four million dollar reserve to balance the budget, okay? So again, we'll have that final update next, the next time we meet. So here's our additions, I want to point out, a lot of, the last few years, when I've stood in front of you, you've had several pages of additions, if you want to call it that. Really, this year, this is all geared toward employees. There's not any, really any items in here for adding a bunch of new programs, et cetera, material items, et cetera, on this sheet. But I did add the yellow to make sure that you understood, when we add a twenty-five hundred dollar governor recommendation, that includes benefits of social security, Medicare, and TRS. So we have adjusted that number up just a little bit, a little bit over three million. That is the expense side, we will get funded from the state for the people that we are earning on. So again, it's expense of three million, we may be earning two million, two point five million, I'm just showing you the expense side. State health is that top number, one point eight million. And then I wanted to point out, this was not on the slide last time, local teaching supplement incremental increase. So if we give certified employees, teachers, et cetera, a twenty-five hundred dollar increase, their local supplement is also going to increase incrementally at an average of about eight percent. So some teachers, when they start and in the middle of their tenure and their end of their tenure, it's like a bell curve, it's not consistent all the way through. So we did want to, we did want to point out that if we do the twenty-five hundred dollar increase, it'll cost another hundred and seventy-five thousand on the local supplement. So the teacher, the certified employees benefiting from both of those categories. For administrators like myself, if we are getting the twenty-five hundred, we don't get the local supplement. So if you do the math, this is just for the certified people, not administrators. I hope that's not confusing, but I did want to add a line that there's an additional cost anytime we do something that the governor recommends, there's a local cost as well. Okay, just wanted to repoint out on our other funds for special revenue, you know, I pointed out Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Special Ed I D E A, mainstay, pre-kindergarten, and a little bit of S R three lift, that's pretty much your special revenue funds. If you remember last time, I told you that we lost the, or did not qualify to receive the hospital grant. Again, so that is costing us about two hundred and thirty thousand in this coming fiscal year. So we are going to budget to retain our existing resources in nursing for, and having provided nurse for every school, and that costs us about nine hundred thousand dollars. Nutrition, nine point three million in spending, again, we're still in the community eligible provision stage, which is still providing adequate revenue to not, not have to charge the students for breakfast and lunch. We still charge for à la carte and adult sales. Debt service, again, this is a revised number that's based on a number less than the maximum amount of the bond. So it could be a March one, approximate when we would owe this money in twenty twenty-five, March first of twenty twenty-five. Again, a lot of that's based on when we actually sell the bond. You may give us approval to do it at May twenty-second's meeting, but it might not happen till December or September or whatever it is. So a lot of that's based on the timing. Capital projects, thirty-eight point eight million, I just noticed, like I told you last time, Splot four is not mentioned here. Splot four should be over before we close out in June. If we're lucky, we'll close out Splot three, but it's more likely we'll do that maybe this fall. So hopefully by December, we'll have two of these Splot closed out, because we're fixing to add another one and maybe opening up a debt service fund, so two more bank accounts, closing two banks, it'll be a net zero. So in summary, this is the most information update that I could give you as of last Friday, May the third. We've full work scheduled for the employees, proposed step increases, salary increase twenty-five hundred from the, from the governor's office. We talked about teacher allotments, we talked about S R funds running out, we talked about the ninety-five percent operational department budgets, and we will continue to have a plan of action every time you all see me standing up here. We'll, we'll continue to do that till we get the budget approved. So I'm ready to go into the Q and A if all, but I do want to defer at this point to the superintendent. I think he would like to make a couple of comments specifically about the retention supplement. And in my PowerPoint, again, I've made it out for it to be interpreted as teachers receive a tiered amount and other employees receive a defined amount, so, Superintendent?
Chair?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Harper, let me get you to display the teacher retention plan. So board members, there has been much ado about the retention efforts. We've had a couple of brief conversations about this concept since January. I've met with individual employees, I've met with employee groups, I have meetings scheduled with employee groups. But I wanted to be able to provide a bit of clarity, if I may. Roughly a year ago, when we were discussing the millage rate at that time, I talked with you about the intentions of how those monies would be used. I shared with you the intent to be able to compete with the larger districts who are outpaying our teacher salaries and thus creating gateways for teachers to leave our classrooms and join other districts. I shared with you that I would try to establish a plan to where we could not only retain our best teachers, but also be more attractive to the surrounding areas and maybe collect some of those best teachers as it relates to being able to provide them, you know, a competitive salary. So there, there are a couple of things that I think it's important to understand. First and foremost, this retention plan speaks to classroom teachers. And I want to be clear with you with regards to how we define classroom teachers. Those are the teachers who are the teachers of record, they are teaching FTE. It is not an ancillary scheduled assignment or anything to that effect. It is not intended to give anyone the impression that their value, be it a verb or noun, is lessened or not considered. But at the end of the day, the highest population of vacancies that we have happen to be in the classroom. The greatest opportunities for us to improve the performance of the learning outcomes and overall school performance happens to be in the classroom. And the overall percentage of attrition happens to be those who are the classroom teachers. And so while, while there are conversations and requests and compelling with regards to why others may not be involved in this concept, I will simply add that in order for us to create a structure that is competitive for those who are teaching students via the C P I report or via the master schedules, this is the structure that we came up with. I intend to continue to speak with all of our employee groups who are either asking to have a conversation with me or demonstrate a need to have more clarity regarding this. Mr. Harper, if you would go to the bottom page two. But while he's doing that, I just wanted to reiterate, at no point was it ever insinuated or, or postured that, that there would not be something for everyone. But if I'm honest with you, what matters most right now, particularly in the seven schools, where legislation have said that those schools need to perform much faster, much better, or it's likely that we will lose students and they will take their FTE earnings with them to private schools, we have to address the reality. And the reality is, I have a shortage of teachers. I have a shortage of teachers in high needs content, and I have a shortage of teachers in high needs schools. I cannot do for those teachers if I tried to do for everyone. And so this is the demonstrated effort to make a commitment to those schools, those students, those job groups. But if there is one who's online or in the room who's wondering what's going to be done for me, those employees will receive a thousand dollars. What this scale lays out is the cost to implement this plan. If you were to add up the FY twenty-five implementation cost with benefits, you'll see roughly three point five million dollars, that's the three point five that Mr. Jones is talking about. I also shared with you that if we were trying to do this, I would do the best that I could to create a plan that I believe that we could sustain. And when I say sustain, I'm talking about a seven to ten year ramp. So all along, it has been the effort of this plan to keep those who are good at providing high quality pedagogical lessons in the classroom, while also attracting those who are good at that same service to Griffin Spalding. That's the nature of it, and while I regret that there may be some who believe that, that more should be done for their job classification, when it's all said and done, this is a strategic decision. And while I can't do for all what I need to do for some, I did try to do for all something. And so I'll field any questions that you have, but if, if we are serious about ensuring that students can read, write, speak, and solve, if we are serious about ensuring that every student has access to rigorous tier one instruction, then we must first be serious about ensuring that there are no instructional vacancies at any school, on any given date, in any content area or grade level. I believe that this plan postures us to begin to combat that effort. I'll take whatever questions you have now.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah, I'll start. And I apologize if the questions I have probably should have been asked over the last month or so, but my, my hydrocolator needed adjustment, so I wasn't able to ask them as I wanted to, but thank you for those. But thank you for those comments and explanations. But I wanted to share my concerns that I've seen the system get into. And it, you know, goes hand in hand with HR and finance. And what we find, and we hear all of this about what the governor recommends and this and that, that comes down, they come down as mandate, but you know, on most occasion, they don't come with the adequate funding. And that leads me to my concern. We find ourselves in a position, and I wanted to ask Ms. Battle as well. We find ourselves in a position where our pay scale, pay grade scale employee is thrown off. And for an example, you can have someone in a supervisory position not making what a staff person under them is making. You know, the balance is off. You have longer employed employees who are making less than new people coming in. We begin to see that kind of stuff. We got in a position a few years ago, not every board member was here, but Ms. Cook was, where we were faced with a very large lump sum that we needed to try to rectify that problem, and we wasn't able to. And I would like to know, is that being considered with all this coming at us about pay adjustment, about incentives, retention bonuses, and things of that nature? Are we keeping our eyes on how that is affecting employees where they are on the pay scale, pay grade? Because we don't want to be in a position where we were some years ago, where we had some employees who were disgruntled because new people were coming in making more than they were. You understand where I'm going? And I know you all have a lot that's being thrown at you. We have a lot. I'll say, I'll correct that. We have a lot being thrown at us. And that's going to throw our pay scale and equity and years of service and all of that. It's going to throw it off. Well, it was already thrown off. We were trying to correct it. Is anyone, are we watching that or have we gone back to look at that to see where we are as far as that goes?
Yes, so Mr. Holmes, we are. So when we, with these supplements, if you look, since it's retention, people that will receive these are currently in the district.
Right.
So the newly hired employees, we are trying to recruit, the maximum supplement that they will receive will be $1,000. But then our retention, the minimum starts at 1,500. So the employee who is here will have a retention supplement that is higher than the new person coming in. And what we do when we scale our employees, when we do the rarefication forms, we look at that job classification and do, we have a cap on the number of years that we allow a person to transfer in for placement, for classified, not teachers, classified. So that top is step 12. And our salary schedules go all the way to step 25. So someone new to the district, in spite of the level of experience that they carry with them, we top them at step 12 for consideration for the employees who are already working in the district. And we do review to see how those people in that job category are ranked. So we are mindful of that. We watch it, especially after the recent implementation of the salary study. We recently ran into something that we had to revisit, and we're working with that division lead right now to make sure that when we place individuals, we take into consideration those employees who are currently working in that same job classification.
Thank you, thank you.
Ever. To employee morale, things of that nature. Just seeing that their pay is below what they should be making in the profession, there's enough to deal with already. But then we add those other variables that we've had to deal with over the years of pay equity according to years of experience, new people, you know, starting and transferring in. So that's comforting to hear that you put those caps and you're watching those things. So I appreciate that. But I'm just sharing with you, I'm just real, it's a concern in mind, I'm real leery because you got money coming in for this, being mandated for that. And I'm just afraid that we are going to really have some people who are, you know, out of balance on the pay scale. And I just, you know, we don't, we have this with professions, we get them just like you do. The profession where they're disgruntled about not getting this and not getting that, but we can't do anything about a mandate that comes to us. You know, how it's got to be applied and who's it applied to, you know, that's out of our hands. But I'm just real concerned about all the money that is flying around and how it's going to land and how it's going to affect us, you know, down the road.
Yes, sir. So one of the things, Mr. Holmes and board members, that may often be overlooked, so the structure starts with the $1,500. So at no point, as best we understand it, and there may be an anomaly that'll show up at some point down the line, and we'll confront that then, but at no point will anyone come to Griffin and earn more than someone who is in Griffin already. This structure prevents that. It pushes back on that. The other side of it is it's about consecutive years of service. So where you really begin the opportunity for growth in this stipend is in the consecutive years of service. And that's the greatest cost that we have. It's the thousands of dollars that we invest employees for a year or two to have no opportunity to get any return on that investment. So again, this is designed particularly for the teachers. When you consider the money that we invest in professional learning for instructional practices, and that is done on behalf of someone that we are trying to get to remain in the district, but if our salary structure doesn't allow us to compete, they, like any person who is wanting to do the best they can for their family, is likely to move on. And so this was another way of trying to address that. I have heard from members of the staff that we need to clearly communicate this is not a compounding stipend. It is a $250 increase from one year to the next. That's it. And it doesn't, for example, for the person who is in the district on their 29th year next year, they standard receive a stipend of 8,250. They would not get 8,250 plus 8,500 for year 30. They would simply go from 8,250 in year 29 to 8,500 in year 30. So again, we will work through those nuances. But the intention, and I think that is something that really cannot be denied, the intention is to confront the reality that there are students that are being educated by substitutes because we don't have teachers in their classrooms. And that cannot continue to happen, and we expect those students to learn at high levels, and we expect those schools to perform at higher levels. Nothing against the substitute, but the substitute has a competence level that's not the same as a formerly trained teacher. It is what it is, and this is our way of confronting that reality. It is not intended to make any of our employees feel less valued, feel less seen, feel less heard. In fact, if I had my druthers, I would hope that all employees would fill out an application to go back into the classroom. But I know that that's not going to happen because some don't have that desire. Some have moved on past that point in their career. But every day that schools open, we should have in a classroom someone who is prepared to teach at the highest level. And until that happens, we're hoping. And hoping is not a strategy. That's a feeling. So that's what this is all about.
One last question, one last thing, and then I yield the rest of my time. I'm going to digress and go back to something that I addressed with the superintendent and our nutrition director. And I just would like to see it come to fruition about, you know, we are, our students are, and I'm just looking at the handout from the presentation Mr. Jones just did. You know, I see where adult sales are still available, the staff increased costs for inflation in food, but we still have a, pretty much a hundred percent free lunch, free meal program for our students. And there was something that was brought to my attention, and there was a plan that was brought to address expanding that free meal to our students, our scholars who are participating in after-school activities. I would like to see that whatever that has held that up, would like to see it resolved to where, whatever issue is with the funding, where the funding coming from, I understand that may be part of the issue, that it is resolved so that our student, those students who are participating in extracurricular activities can benefit from these nutritional programs. It's been a couple of years, going on a couple of years, that we've put it out there, but it hasn't been used or utilized like it should. And it would be great if we can say that after a long day, these kids go out, whether it's band, whether it's athletics, whether, whatever it may be that is outside of the norm of a school day, it would be good to say that we are feeding these babies, that they are getting nutrition. Because, you know, I know after a long day in school, that they got to be re-energized, that battery got to be recharged. So I just ask whoever needs to resolve it between nutrition and finance or wherever that pool of money comes from, whoever is in control of that money, let's get it resolved so that we can do what's best for these kids and we can put that to rest. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones, board members?
I have some.
Ms. McDonald?
It's more of a statement, I think. I know this board has heard from many of our employees that are not included in this, SLPs, media, instructional coaches, psychologists. We have received many emails. I hope, and I've done some additional research myself in talking to people that know, we're talking about to, and I understand Dr. Simmons and what he said, and I get all that, I do not think it's equitable to leave these certified employees out of what Dr. Simmons just said. It's not equitable to me. And I think they should be included. And we're talking about less than 50 people, including media, psychologists, instructional coaches, and other support. We're not talking 150 additional employees, we're talking less than 50. And when I talked to an SLP this week, and her caseload is 65, I think the state recommends in the 40s, as I read in one of the letters, and then I learned additionally that they do their own billing. I was shocked of the time it takes to file those forms. And I mean, she explained it to me how it's done. So we need to take care of those people that are actually working in overdrive. Teachers are working in overdrive. We're all working in overdrive. That's just the season that we're in right now. We can't do anything about that. But in my opinion, and I hope this board agrees with me, it is not equitable to leave these people out. And I have said that from day one, and as long as I have breath in me, I will continue to say it. Now, my question is, what kind of dollars are we talking about to include these 48 people in what Dr. Simmons just presented? Because when I read the email from Jackson Road Media Specialist, I didn't know whether to cry or go out there and just give her a hug. Because I'm telling you, that is not normal. But this lady goes to bat for her students every day, as all of our other media specialists do, because I could not have survived without a media specialist when I was in the classroom. They deserve it. And I hope this board will support me in saying that we need to include these people, less than 50, in what he just presented to us, because they deserve it. And instructional coaches, you might have an instructional coach that is also certified that is trying to aid or come to help a certified teacher that's making more than sheer him. Have we thought about that?
Point of clarity.
I'm just talking in general, I don't really need an answer.
Instructional coaches in the recommendation right now are included. And they've had that communicated. I know we've been communicating with several instructional coaches via email.
That's not true. That's not true. That's not true. Instructional coaches are not teachers of record. I don't have intentions of this retention stipend being applied to those who aren't teachers of record. Board, you may not want to hear it, and I'm not trying to be rude. It's just the recommendation. We don't have to do this. We don't. But what I believe that we've not paid attention to, it's all premised around tax dollars. And unless there's an appetite to raise those, to generate more revenue, then my belief was trying to do what was essential in the moment, and what I will offer. When you start trying to place, you know, this hierarchy on who makes more based on what they do. When you start trying to place, you know, this hierarchy on who makes more based on, on, on what they do, this, that, and the other, you, you get into the circumstance that Mr. Holmes was talking about. This board, if I, if, if I may, has constantly talked to me about diminishing the number of teachers who leave the classroom. But if I were to recall and re-show you presentations, their language speaks to pay. You and I know that larger school districts have more FTE. They have larger budgets. They can do more. So what we have to do is either generate this revenue through tax dollars or in, in some ways, be equitable based on what your needs are. I would love to do a lot more for everyone. The guy who turns a wrench under the bus hood. The guy who, who mops the bathroom floor at night. But those two things aren't what's driving school, they're not driving school improvement, not right now. I, I, I'm not trying to create division in the school district. If you want to relax the commitment to ensuring that we have high-quality teachers in every classroom, every day, in every school, every content, every grade, we can, we can let this go. I don't want you to think that I'm trying to, to, to elevate someone's clout or, or, or their responsibility more than the other. But, but I do recall the one thing that every school in this system is judged on is the way that students demonstrate what they've learned. That, that's it. And this was an attempt to ensure that every student at least had access to a certified teacher who had the competence and the skill set to give the kid a chance to learn. When we get other resources, we can do other things. But I don't want you to think that this is me trying to create division in the school system. I have said to those that I've already spoken to and those that I will speak to, everyone plays a role. You and I play a role. That's why everyone will get something. But if we try to do the same thing for everyone, there's really nothing to do. That, that's the intent. We don't have to move forward with, with this particular recommendation, if, if that's your desire. But we don't have the means to sustain doing what at least you're, you're proposing, Ms. McDonald, because we don't have the revenue. And I don't believe that you have the appetite to raise taxes, to generate the revenue. So I was trying to be mindful of that as well.
Dr. Simmons, I understand that you're, I know, I know your intent is good. I'm not questioning that at all. What I am questioning is, we're not treating everyone equitable. That's, and you, and you don't think that won't divide the staff if they're not treated in an equitable fashion?
By definition, equity is when you give people the resources that they need. I think what you're saying is we're not treating people equally, and, and, and we are not. Because at the end of the day, right now, when those students come back tomorrow, there's gonna be a teacher in a classroom who's stressed because he or she is not, they're not confident or they're not sure that students are able to demonstrate the highest level of learning. Trust me, the coaches stressed, the principals stressed, the custodians stressed, the counselors stressed, the SLP. Everyone's stressed, but that stress is not the same as a teacher of record whose name's associated with the kids and their learning abilities. You've taught. You know that. So again, I, 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 I do understand it. And, 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 and if it were up to me, give everybody whatever they ask for. But you've charged me with improving schools. And you can't improve a school when you have a vacant classroom and a substitute teaching core content. And you can't improve schools when you invest six thousand dollars in a person that you hire in one year, and you say goodbye to them at the end of that year, and then you repeat that process. Th- this is not easy, but this is simple. Our reality is, we have got to find a way to keep those who are teaching students as teachers of record, the people that we're funded for. We've got to keep them in the classrooms. I would encourage you, go back and look at the number of teachers of year who are no longer in the classroom. And just because we refilled that vacancy doesn't mean we refilled it at the same level of competence. So, so I, I understand what you're saying. But if you wanna relax the commitment that the, that the mission is empowering every student to graduate college and career-ready, you first have to create the conditions of doing so. I'm not saying that no one doesn't deserve all of this. I'm simply saying we don't have all of this to give all of them. And if I'm honest, if we can't do it that way, then maybe we don't do it at all. And we continue to find another way to keep people in Griffin Spalding while other school districts are paying them more and waving the finger to invite them. Either way it goes, we have to do something. This is me trying to do something, because doing nothing is doing something as well.
Well, I, to my knowledge, I believe we've already lost four SLPs because of this situation.
And what I would offer, then we'll have to work harder at keeping them. We'll have to work harder at keeping them.
Would somebody, would, would, Mr. Jones, would someone figure out what these forty-eight employees would, would cost us additionally, please? You don't do it today. You can send me an email. Send us an email. Because I don't really think we're talking, you know, Georgia lottery winnings here. But yeah, I, I get what you're saying, Dr. Simmons. I'm all about being equal. I am. So let's be equal.
Any other board members have questions or comments about this? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board members, you have informational items uh, in your packet, the construction renovation progress summary, the monthly facilities maintenance report, the Griffin High School state finals track meet overnight field trip, gifted advisory council update, and the uh, summer learning program update that is in there. So make sure that you have done that. Uh, we're now at uh, governance team comments, which is before executive session, and we do have uh, something for executive session. But I will start with Mr. Brown for our governance team comments.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, just wanna say to the educators, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. We greatly appreciate what you do. We are definitely in the home stretch. Uh, on, what day is that gonna be? Tuesday, or is it Wednesday? Don't remember. Hold on. One second. In a while. On Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM, we will have our District One Senior Recognition Program honoring those scholars from AZ Kelsey Academy, Griffin High School, and Spalden High School. And to the substitute teachers who have been filling in this year, thank you guys so much. Ladies and gentlemen, so much for all that you do and your willingness to serve our scholars and families. No other reports. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you to all the classroom teachers out there. You are the heartbeat of this system. Please know how much we appreciate each one of you and what you do. I wanna give kudos to Mr. Jones, his staff, Dr. Simmons, senior cabinet, principals, teachers, staff, everybody who had input on the budget for being so thorough and comprehensive in putting together this budget. Thank you.
I just wanted to wish everyone a teach, uh, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, I know for me, as a former educator, it was always a fun-filled week. And the things that I've seen online and social media, looks like everybody's having a good time. I just wanted to say thank you. And um, let's see, we have what, three weeks of school left, I guess, counting this week? So we're on the, at the end of the shopping cart, so to speak. So let's, let's make it special and for everyone concerned and appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
For Holmes?
Yes, uh, like to echo uh, what Mr. Brown and Ms. McDonald said about Teacher Appreciation Week. But I, I must um, bring to the attention of some that may not have noticed. Um, I don't know if it's the brainchild or Mr. Pew or whoever, but I have noticed the increased media coverage of school activities uh, on social media, which is uh, what we've been talking about, telling our story. Uh, and, and, and I appreciate seeing all the activities, you know, from the school, sports, student achievement, all of that. That, that, that has been great. So I don't know who uh, to attribute that to, but I just wanna make note and let you know it has been noticed. Uh, and, and that's a wonderful job of telling our, our story, uh, telling our kids' story. And I, I, I want to share something from uh, I think it was a scholar on the uh, the school website where we highlighted her. Uh, but she said something so profound and interesting for me. Uh, the young lady, I just happened to know her parents and her grandparents actually used to work with her grandparents. And the young lady is a, a senior that, that will be graduating. And she said during her, during her highlight time that she was like, she said she think that Griffin Spalding gets a bad rap because so many people focus on the negative. But there are so many things going on in our district. And she, being in the district part to the beginning of her educational uh, journey. And she said that she had a wonderful uh, educational experience. And it was just great to hear her talk about the positive experience during her time from pre-K to uh, being a uh, a waiting graduate. And I just wanted to highlight her. Have her seen that on the website. Do yourself a favor and go back and watch it and listen to her because I, I agree with her. We have so many people focusing on the negative. We have so, so much focus on the negative that we are not getting the proper highlight for the positive things that are going on in our school district. And, and being a graduate that have came out of this district that chose to come back, and I emphasize, chose to Griffin Spalding. That I, uh, it was just refreshing and good for me to hear that from a young child out of the miles of a babe.
Very good.
Spotlight, that's what it was, the spotlight.
You good?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Simmons?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, um, audience, those online. I, I think I will simply say, when all is said and done, uh, there should be less said and more done. So keep doing. Keep doing. Keep doing for them. Keep doing for you. Keep doing for us. Keep doing. Thank you, sir.
Board members, I was able to uh, attend the governmental operations committee for the GSB legislative positions, and there is only a couple of minor changes. Uh, Ms. McDonald has agreed to be our delegate at the uh, summer conference, uh, to be able to vote on that. But I wanted you to know those changes just in case. And that is um, under the levy for school safety, they are adding a, a line that just says, GSBA supports adding school safety to the QBE formula, funding formula. Uh, and then another one right underneath it with the equalization eligibility requirement. Um, right now it's sitting at fourteen mills in order for a system to be eligible. And they're trying to, want to advocate for it to be at ten mills. Uh, and then the third minor change was removing um, the statement about COVID from those things. So uh, with that, I, you know, you know, you can talk with Vissu. We can, I don't think we have to formally adopt that we are supporting her in that, but just give her the consensus if you have any other option or realization with that that you wanna share with her. So with that, um, I do not have an executive session uh, thing in front of me at the moment. I didn't see that folder. Um, but we will be going into, I'm, entertain a motion to go into executive session for evaluation of personnel. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. It'd be five oh. All right, we will go into executive session. Thank you for those that are here. And uh, I know that we will not see all of you when we come out.